Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And for the record, we have our city attorney Scott Campbell present also.
Excellent. Do we have any announcements or written communications?
We have received one written communication on item eight and item nine.
Okay. And also that the planning commission vacancy has been extended to February 3rd? Or no?
The second Wednesday. I think it's the ninth, Annie.
The ninth of February?
It will be posted in the paper the next five Fridays.
Okay. And they need to pick up a paper application here at City Hall?
Yes, or we can email it to them if they email us.
Or it can be emailed. Okay, thank you. All righty, well, we shall go into our presentation. We have a representative from Catalina Island Medical Center. CEO Jason Paray.
Jason Paray, our CEO.
Thank you, City Council, for giving me the opportunity to give an update on our COVID situation right now. We do have a COVID problem in our community. Just so that we, to give everyone an idea of what we've been doing up at the hospital, so far since COVID began, we've put about over 7,000 shots in arms. In the last two weeks, we've put in 148. We've tested 5,800 individuals. In the last week, we've tested 366 positives detected. Overall, since COVID began, we've had 417 positives. And this is where it starts to get a little bit unsettling. In the last two weeks, we've had over 105. And so, over a quarter of our positives have come in the last two weeks. When you look at the seven-day testing positivity average, which is of all the people that come in, what is the percentage of people that are testing positive? LA County is at about 15%. The last two weeks in Avalon have been around 35%. And so, we really have, I don't know if it's there's more COVID in our community, or if it is, we just have greater access to testing compared to over town, and people aren't willing to wait in line five, six hours to get tested. But at the hospital, we are still doing vaccination clinics. We do Pfizer for ages five and older from one to three, oh, I'm sorry. We do Pfizer on Tuesdays from one to three for anyone over the age of 12. We also do from three to five on Tuesdays, anyone from five to 11, because they're different doses. With Moderna, we were providing that on Thursdays from one to three. And we are offering the booster for anyone that has gone beyond six months after their initial sequence of test of vaccination. If people would like to be tested, please call the clinic and make an appointment. We're not doing testing, we're doing all of our testing in blocks because we're so short-staffed, and we're also inundated with so many patients at this time. So, please be patient. Generally, we get you tested within the same day or the next day, based on when you call. And if we have to send out the test, the PCR test, it's generally about a three-day turnaround time. One thing with testing that I'd like to let the community know, because we are testing so many people, we do not have the ability to call back everybody with their test results. But you can get your test results by just logging into the patient portal at Catalina Island Medical Center, and you can see your own results. We do contact everybody that tests positive. We just don't contact everybody that tests negative. Now, one of the things I know that is a little confusing, and anybody can look it up at the Los Angeles County Health Department, but it's, a lot of it's the difference between home isolation and home quarantine. Currently, the way it's out there on the LA County website is, for home isolation, individuals with presumed or confirmed COVID-19, you must stay at home until at least five days pass since your symptoms first started. Plus, you have to have a negative COVID-19 test collected on day five or later. You also have to have not had a fever within 24 hours, and your symptoms need to be improving. Now, the difference with quarantine is that you've been in contact with a confirmed case, so then you need to go into quarantine, which is going back to the 10-day standard that we're so, that we're used to. So, it's 10 days from the date of last exposure. After day seven, if you have a viral test collected, or on, after day five, and the results are negative, you can be set free. Now, there is one exemption. And that is if Annie is fully tested or fully vaccinated, has her booster shot, and she comes in contact with me and wasn't wearing a mask, she has an exemption. But if you don't have the three shots, or finished your two shots, based on where the timeline is, then you don't get that exemption. And one final thing, and we will be sending out a PSA probably within the next day or so. We did find that LA County is now offering free at-home test kits. You just have to go in line and sign up for them, and they'll ship them out to you.
Really?
I did try them today, Jason, and they said they'd reached their limits, so I was hoping they would get more.
Yes, home testing kits are very difficult to get our hands on. I know that we're having difficulty at Leo's getting them. I've talked to friends around the country, and they go to their pharmacies in their local communities, and they can't go get them either.
And if they do come, you should ration them out, I guess, huh? Somebody shouldn't be able to buy 10 of them or whatever, once we get them.
Well, we can't even get our hands on them.
I know, but people will hoard them. Are there any questions? And any questions, Michael, on your machine?
I've not received any questions.
Okay. No questions? Well, thank you.
And we will have the fitness facility most likely open when this next spike is over.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. That's good news. People are looking forward to that gym. Okay. Oh, I guess I'll do this little goodie. So, as many of you know, Michael Palmer, Assistant City Manager, will be leading us as of this Friday. And we are very, very, very sad about this. But we do have a little proclamation, so I'm going to get up there and read it.
And you can stand up there, too, Michael.
I'm trying to make sure he can hear you.
Proclamation issued at Avalon, Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer. Whereas Michael Palmer is an employee by the City of Avalon.
As the Assistant City Manager on May 13, 2019, soon after, Michael and his wife, Janelle, sold their home, blocked Stock and Barrel, and relocated to our beautiful island. Whereas, in his short time of the city, Michael led the development, adoption, and implementation of several key policies, which included the development impact fees and capacity charges, Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act procedures for public projects, and non-transient rental inspection regulations. And whereas, Michael provided oversight for the city landfill and wastewater treatment plant contracts, housing successor agency, and the Avalon Housing Authority. And whereas, Michael took on the challenging position of interim planning director, provided staff support to the planning commission, and managed multiple consultants and planning grants. And whereas, during the 2019 coronavirus pandemic, Michael took on the daily task of disseminating the information the city received from the federal government, state, and county, and provided it to community stakeholders. And whereas, Michael Palmer represented the city and sat on the Board of Directors for the Public Agency Risk-Sharing Authority of California. He had all the fun jobs, right? And whereas, Michael has a very strong work ethic and works tirelessly contributing to the city team. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Avalon would like to extend to Michael Palmer our deep appreciation for your exemplary service to our community, and our best wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors. Thank you, baby.
Is there anything you want to say, Michael?
I'm just really overwhelmed by all the support that this community has shown, my wife and I, and it's definitely bittersweet. Not quite what we were planning in the long term. Unfortunately, COVID just kind of made us reassess and wanted to be a little bit closer to our aging parents, and we're really going to miss all the friendships, and are looking forward to continuing to maintain contact. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, Department has reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got a couple items. First one, December storms here. Public Works crews monitored and reacted to the second significant set of storms that happened this last week and all throughout December, excuse me. During these type of events, we prep by inspecting and cleaning the storm drainage along front streets and in some of the other locations we have up in the foothills. We place sand and sandbags for the public use at the South Beach. We clean debris from the roadways, multiple roadways and get the hillside debris. And then we also, we monitor the rockfall activity, you know, and then we have to end up usually closing Pebbley Beach Road during the heaviest events because we're getting both wave action on the revetment that's kicking debris on the roadway, and then we're also getting the hillside rockfall, which is protected by, somewhat by the barriers there, but it's not good to have open, especially during the night when there's no lighting out there. So, that's why we do close that. And I know it's inconvenient, but we do want to make sure that it's safe. So, I'm glad to report that we received a significant amount of rainfall in December. I think almost five inches there, 4.76 inches. But all systems held up well, and the most significant result was the rockfall debris from the hillsides that we had to clean up, especially on Pebbley Beach Road. During the height of the resorm, this resulted in closing Pebbley Beach Road. All of this is not possible without the dedicated work of the Public Works crews. While others are at home, nice and warm, we're out there often in the middle of the night, cold, and when it's dark, and making sure that the community is safe. So, I want to congratulate all our Public Works crews for keeping our community safe. And the second item is, I'd like to acknowledge the great work and contributions of Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer. Mike and I have developed a great working relationship over his time here. Wish he would stay. I'm very thankful for his leadership and his dedication, and wish him the best in his future endeavors.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Any questions?
Any questions, Bob Greenlaw?
Just a question on the parking spaces that are closest to the trailhead that run next to the Pancake Cottage there in front of them. There's some significant water holding that's happening there. I know that area has been an issue in terms of drainage previously, and it was nice to see it very clear for the most part, except for that one spot. I don't know if we need to look at some kind of drainage for those parking spaces. The water even a couple days after rain was still at almost the sidewalk level.
Yes, it's something that we need to, it's something we need to address. I looked at that myself, and I said I need to get out there. Elevate that up on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Harbor Mester?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My report tonight is mainly focused on the Christmas vacation period. We had, as Bob had mentioned, we had challenging weather for most of the period, which really put a damp, a damper on the visiting vessels coming to Avalon. Rain was in the forecast most of the days, and when we didn't have rain, we had wind. So, patrol on every shift worked hard, securing the floats, protecting the pier, pumping out dinghies, and assisting those in need throughout that period. A number of cruise ship visits were either canceled or moved to other, another day when weather permitted. The numbers that we had were that patrol moored 74 vessels for a total of 912 nights. Patrol assisted baywatch two times, warned and advised six individuals of municipal code violations, and assisted the sheriffs two times, did 27 public assists, three of which of them were toes of broken-down vessels. We also did 95 security patrols throughout the facilities. The Harbor Department continues to address maintenance needs throughout our facilities. We work, of course, with Bob Greenlaw and the Public Works. Two of our main floats at the mole area are scheduled for much-needed maintenance. Flots two and three along the mole area will be out for approximately six weeks or until approximately March 1st, if everything goes as planned. The city has been in communications with Catalina Flyer and the Catalina Express in order to mitigate any disruptions of service, and more of the vessels will be running off-float for during that period. That's all we have.
Any questions of our Harbor Mester? No, thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Captain Joe Badali, Avalon Sheriff's Station. And we've been steadily maintaining the peace and order around, and happy to report that we haven't had anything super significant go on. However, during Christmas week, we had a visiting individual who was here with his family, visiting family on the island, and he was running amok tagging up the, basically the waterfront. So, at Pleasure Pier, the mole, he caused a significant amount of damage. And his tagging, his tagging kept us busy in trying to investigate through a great partnership with the Harbor Patrol. Officer Paul Sanchez managed to identify who the individual was, and I managed to get on the boat as he and his family were leaving. We detained him to identify him, and turns out to be a ninth grader out of the City of Torrance. And we recovered evidence that he had of tagging. We maintained possession of some spray paint cans that we tried to get fingerprints off of and DNA. So, that case is going to be continuing, but happy to report he's off the island, and we're able to identify him, and now the investigation's going to continue forward in that respect.
Wow. Is there liability on the parents' parts being, on the parents being that he's a minor?
They can't be held by the court for the expenses, potentially. And so, it's up to the court and how they wish to assess that toward the parents or the city fining the family in that respect as well, adjudication of the case.
Yeah, okay. Well, any other questions? No, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. In December, early December, I attended the California League of Cities Fire Chief Conference. It was a great networking conference, met a lot of new people from Northern California and Southern California. Lot of good networking there. In the month of December, we had about 30 fire calls and just under 40 EMS calls. And for the year, we ran 1,401 total calls for the year. That was 256 more calls than last year. So, the guys have been busier, and all the calls we get, we're not getting a lot of, there's a few, like, not big deal calls, but most of all are medical calls lately. They're all legit medical calls. And you'll see the guys dressing up in all their gear right now. We're assuming everybody has COVID, so we're taking all the protocols. We're not allowing any visitors in the station for T-shirts or anything. So, we're doing, we're wiping things down, doing the best we can to keep it out. And then, just on New Year's Eve, there were some fireworks. I'd like to thank the sheriff, the crews, and myself, and the sheriffs all drove around, but it was just luckily a one-time thing, so we didn't catch anyone. But it was just a one-time thing at midnight, and we couldn't find them.
Oh, great. Any questions of our chief? No, thank you so much.
Community service. December 22nd, the Community Service Department passed out 40 food baskets for local families in need. The baskets consisted of whole hams, green beans, potatoes, gravy, stuffing, and an apple pie. On top of the food, we also handed out presents that were donated by four local toy drives. The Avalon Chef's Department, IEX Helicopter, the Hermosa Hotel, and Southern California Edison, who also sent volunteers to help pass out the toys. I also want to thank the elders from the Mormon Church who volunteered to help pass out the food and translated for our local Hispanic community. All of this is due to the generous donations from our local community clubs, the Lions and the Rotary, and stakeholders such as Santa Catalina Island Company and Catalina Beverage Company, and the city's own BBK and Scott Campbell. It was awesome again to work with the different organizations as they bring the happy to the holidays this year, and look forward to working with them again. On January 1st, the city held its annual polar bear plunge. It was the biggest polar bear plunge to date. There was an estimated 80 people who participated. People saw it was happening, and they just went to their hotel rooms and threw on their swim gear and jumped right in with us. Some people just plunged, while others swam out to the first buoy and back. Afterwards, people stayed to talk about the rejuvenating experience over coffee and some muffins. It was a great way to wash off the old year and jump into the new one. We would like to thank Charlie Camby and the Swim Club for both cosponsoring of the event and doing the mile swim in the morning, and then coming out and plunging with us again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for?
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that David officially yesterday accepted the new position of Community Service Supervisor. We interviewed for it, and David came out cream of the crop.
Well, congratulations. All right. Did you text Dan and tell him? Did you text Dan and tell him? Okay, good. Awesome. Okay, City Manager report?
I have a couple of quick little announcements, just to remind the public of what the City Hall hours are. Eight every morning from eight to 12, Monday through Thursday. That's when we do vehicles. Lunch is from 12 to 1:00, and we are closed during that time period. And 1:00 to 5:00 is commuter subsidies. Next council meeting, we will have an update from Southern California Edison on water, so we're looking forward to hearing that. And I do want to thank all the Public Works crews that particularly came out on their holidays and in the dark, and for all their cleanup during our storm over the holidays. That was, they're always the ones that bear that brunt, so it's much appreciated. And I would like to personally thank Michael for his professionalism and friendship. He's made those long hours, particularly during our last two years, very bearable. Him and I and Matt and Bob would be the last ones in the building at round six, and one of us would call the other and say, "It's time to go home." So, I thank him very much, and he will be sorely missed. There is nothing that Michael wouldn't take on.
I know, I know. Thank you. Gosh, okay. Michael Palmer, do you have a report?
I do. I have a couple updates. I just wanted to let everyone know that currently, the public review period is open for the housing element update. There is a copy available online and a physical copy here, if anyone is interested. We are expecting comments to be closed and submitted from each CD by February 1st. And we've got two upcoming meetings. This is also an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the housing element draft. The first one is at a City Council study session at its regular City Council meeting on the 18th. The second point would be on the 19th at the Planning Commission meeting. This will all culminate, hopefully, into a successful adoption by the council on tentatively February 10th, which is a Thursday. That one will just be to review the revisions and comments that were made, and then to make a motion for adoption. And then the second thing I wanted to address is up at the planning counter, and we'll be mailing out a copy of a memo that was prepared a couple days ago. This is in regards to the 15-day waiting period. And we just wanted to remind people that there isn't a 15-day appeal period for anyone who wishes to oppose or to challenge an action by the Planning Commission once that appeal is filed. If it's filed, then the council would have the ability to take action. But we don't issue any building permits until that 15-day period has ended. In most cases, there is no filed appeal. However, we need to keep that day open, otherwise it'd be extremely disruptive for anybody who started work. So, just wanted to remind everyone that it's something that has been implemented and instituted for a very long time. It's codified in the municipal code. If anyone has any questions, please contact me directly, or you can contact either Denise Raddy or our new Assistant City Planner, Susannah Gutierrez, in the Planning Department.
Great. Thank you very much. City Attorney?
No comments other than I will miss Michael, but I will see you in Rancho Cucamonga.
Okay. All righty. Councilmember report?
I'll be there.
Go for it. Okay, Michael.
Mine's short. First, I wanted to say thank you, Michael. It's been a great two years working with you. You have been an amazing asset to this community, and you are going to be sorely missed. But the good thing is now that when people say, "Michael," when we're both in City Hall, it'll be talking to me, and we won't have to decide which one it is. And then my other thing is that I was reappointed by the President of the League this year to Community Services Policy Committee. And we will have our first meeting on January 13th. Well, I'm on a ship outside of Muscat, so I will be zooming in on that. So, but that's all I've got, and keeping my fingers crossed that we get on the ship.
Yes, you will. Okay, thank you, Michael. Lisa?
Just an update that I'll be attending the California Air Resources Board Meeting, which is on January 12th, Wednesday evening, from 4:00 to 7:00. And that's a workshop regarding the commercial harbor craft regulations, which impacts the express and other commercial watercraft. And then also, we'll have an island connectivity meeting on Monday, January 10th. And then, just also want to share my kudos both with Public Works and the Harbor Department, along with the emergency first responders who are always on duty. There was quite a week of storms, and the communication level that you guys had on top of the work was appreciated, and people online were noticing when things were open and closed and appreciating that communication as well, so thank you. Just wanted to remind people about the commuter subsidy. There is currently an additional subsidy, which makes commuter books for people with subsidy cards who are residents of the city six months or longer. That will allow for a $95 commuter book. It's not a discount from the express or the city. It's a subsidy that actually is part of the funds that we receive from Metro. Please be kind and polite and patient with the Catalina Express crew. This is a nice thing. It shouldn't be causing drama. And it's not open to non-subsidized commuter books. So, if you have questions, please speak with the City Hall front desk after 1:00 o'clock on those days that they are open for subsidy card assistance, or with the team at the Catalina Express for questions.
And that is through January only?
That is only for the month of January. And then, the subsidy will allow for a discount. Again, the prices were supposed to be going up January 1st. They have gone up, but the subsidy will cover that increase until, I believe it's June, right? Through June? Okay, through June. So, just a reminder that commuter books after January will be the regular price until June, and then they will be going up by $15 per commuter book after that. And then, just finally to Michael, I don't even know what to say. I appreciate that you have really long conversations with me when we get to have conversations, and that you manage to distill down a great deal of information for us that makes it easy to understand and clear to share with others. And I appreciate your time and effort and energy, and I know that the staff does as well, and we're all going to miss you, so I wish you luck, and Rancho Cucamonga better treat you right. And if not, the boat travels both ways, so you can always come back. Thank you.
Yesenia?
Yes, I hope everyone did enjoy their families during the holidays. And I have been working with a couple of our residents, just trying to help find more resources. find more resources, you know, for immigration cases and things like that. I also came across a couple of people that needed help like for mental health services. And I know here on the island, it's a bit harder to get what we can, you know, especially, it's not a 24/7 service that we have. So I'm hoping that in the future, that's a conversation we can start having. I know that I would get a couple of text messages in the middle of the night. People needed someone to talk to, so I am hoping that we can take this a little bit more serious. And I did offer the resources we already do have, but I think there's more we can do for our residents when it comes to mental health. And Michael, I also want to thank you because anytime I did need to text you for any extra information, I never hesitated and I always just assumed, but you always had the answers. So thank you for all your help.
Hi there. Yeah, I have a few items for tonight. One, I will also be attending the Air Resources Board Meeting on January 12th. I was gonna chime in when Denise was giving her update and just say that I really would like to see the city open City Hall on Fridays, especially through vehicle season. If there's any way we can do something, I'd like to see us at least try. Certainly through a vehicle season. And, oh, yep?
Keep going.
Oh, never mind. Okay. A note to Public Works, just wanted to say thank you so much for the wonderful communication during the storms. I know it was a long week of storms, so great work cleaning up the streets and whatnot as well. The Christmas Eve Golf Car Parade was a roaring success. We had a really, really good time. Thank you to everybody who showed up. Thank you to Love Catalina, who co-sponsored the event. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for, oh my gosh, Janine Rocky, everybody, for all that you did for us. It was super fun. And a special shout out to George Hernandez from our Avalon Fire Station who came out in the old number two truck and powered his way through all those streets. I know it was a great learning experience, but it really made it festive. So thanks for that. The New Year's Eve update, I'm actually would like to share from the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm just gonna look down and read this so I don't miss anything. But wanting to acknowledge Love Catalina's New Year's Eve Gala, which was held last week, and share that under the advice of LA County Public Health, changes were made to increase safety of attendees and all island residents by requiring proof of vaccination and/or a negative COVID-19 test for entry. That change resulted in about 150 guests canceling or otherwise opting not to attend. So overall, the crowd mitigation was really good and therefore greater distance between the guests, between the tables, on the dance floor. So good separation there and it was still a wonderful event. Lastly, I of course couldn't not give a shout out to Mike Palmer. What a wonderful experience it has been working with you. Your leadership through all of the last two years, specifically, you know, the public doesn't get to see all the work that went into communicating to the council, specifically Mayor Marshall and myself at the very beginning of COVID. Our daily phone calls, just daily conversations and I just, how you've picked up every single department that needed to be picked up and carried us along the way. Just a big shout out to you. Thank you so much. And you will always have a wonderful recommendation from the city of Avalon and hopefully Lisa's right and will be back on that boat soon. So thank you for that and that's all I have to report.
I'm gonna be attending SCAG on the phone on Thursday. And Michael, I think I have your cell phone number. So when Denise or Dave Maestros or Dizzy or Devin, I'm gonna say, "I need help writing this letter to so-and-so," I'm gonna call on you. And we're not gonna text. Anyway, so you know I've appreciated working with you and you've been very helpful to me. Thank you and to the whole city. So they all said it much more eloquently, but thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to consent calendar, I believe. Or, I'm sorry, this is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on an item not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Is there any on your machine?
At this time, I have no comments.
Okay, anybody outside there, Joe? We good? Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar.
We have eight items on the consent calendar, but we are gonna be removing item eight, which is the Fifth Amendment to the franchise lease agreement between the city of Avalon and CRNR. And we're placing it under general business. It will be heard this evening, but just under general business. So the first item is minutes from the regular meeting of December 7th and then our December 15th Special City Council meeting. Number two is warrants for a total dispersment of $2,298,408.63. And that is for the time period of November 29th, 2021 through December 24th of 2021. Third item is to determine that COVID-19 state of emergency proclaimed by the governor still exists and has been considered by the City Council in deciding to continue to have teleconference meetings and that state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-19 and that there is a result, and that as a result of the COVID-19 emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees. And just a reminder, that has to come back within 30 days, so you'll keep hearing it. The fourth one is to receive and file the fiscal year 2020/2021 Development Impact Fees Annual Report. The fifth is to authorize the Harbor Master to renew the attached list of waterside permits for 2022. The sixth is to the City Council to make the affirmative finding that conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met and grant the waterside permit application to tailored Catalina charters with the following conditions. First one, all operations to load and unload charter passengers will take place on corolla mole floats except on cruise ship days when all loading and unloading will be from the floats on the Green Pier. The second is the applicant abides by the standard list of conditions for waterside permit holders. The seventh one on consent is to authorize the city manager or their designee to procure, per the city's purchasing policy, an acoustic water leak detector for a total not to exceed $9,000.
Okay, I just have one question on item four. And I brought it up to you Denise, if you don't mind me kind of going out of order, because the money can be used for vehicle replacement. And is there any way we can be sure to earmark that for the fire truck?
Yes, Michael did send a memo and I placed a copy in that in your... No, Boxi Annie answering that. Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I just have one quick question on number seven. Was this a budgeted item?
This was not a budgeted item. This is a repair. I mean, the equipment that we had unexpectedly needed repair, so it's an unexpected item, but it's something that is a critical piece that the Public Works Department uses in order to quickly locate water leaks.
And it will be taken out of the emergency sewer and saltwater fund, which currently has money in it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 7.
Second? Okay, is there any comments?
I have no comments.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Member Tom Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall? Okay, so we'll move on to general business, Mayor.
Yes.
And we'll start with item number eight.
Can you just give me a minute to get the PowerPoint loaded? So good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is the consideration of a Fifth Amendment to the franchise lease agreement between the city of Avalon and CRNR. Just, and I apologize for the small text, but I'll go over a little bit why we're coming to you with this Fifth Amendment. In September of 2016, the state of California set methane emission reduction targets as part of a statewide response to climate change. These, this SB 13, which was signed by Governor Brown, established the targets to achieve a 50% reduction in the level of statewide disposal of organic waste from 2014 levels by 2020 and a 75% reduction by 2025. The SB 1383 also establishes a goal of not less than 20% of currently disposed edible food must be recovered for human consumption. So we need to recover 20% of our edible food that we throw away. The SB 1383 also has a number of stipulations that jurisdictions such as cities, counties, school districts, and federal properties must abide by. Some of this includes providing organic waste, including food waste collection services to all residents and businesses developing... Sorry about that. There we go. There's a delay.
I was gonna share the screen so the council members can see it. I could have done this from back there, but I didn't want to interrupt.
Thank you.
So hopefully now you're seeing what I'm talking about. So SB 1383, as I was saying, also has some additional requirements for cities, counties, school districts, federal institutions. And that's to provide organic waste, including food waste collection services to residents and businesses, developing and adopting an enforcement mechanism or ordinance by July, or January of this year. This was adopted by the City Council at your previous regular meeting in December 7th of 2021. We also have requirements to establish an edible food recovery program, update our procurement policy to reflect new purchasing requirements, providing outreach and education to generators, haulers, facilities, pretty much everybody who is impacted by this legislation. We need to plan and secure access for recycling and edible food recovery capacity. And then we have reporting, monitoring, and enforcement requirements as well. With that, this Fifth Amendment does a couple of different things. The first thing that it does is it adds a new definition and aligns the language of the Fifth Amendment to the newly amended Municipal Code. This is the one that we adopted in December. It revises our previous solid waste container requirements to meet the state code. The state code regulates the coloring and labeling requirements for solid waste recycling in organic containers. It reduces single and multiple family residence services from twice per week to once per week on an as-needed, on-call basis for a nominal fee. Part of the reason for this, and I'll go into greater detail in terms of the cost analysis, but it's the logistical step needed in order to service the current residential base. So right now, CRNR services approximately 1,100 homes, two times per week for a total of 22,000, 2,200 stops. The proposed program in order for us to comply with AB 1383, because now we're going from a single can system to a mandated three-can system, we'll have food, we'll have one for recyclables, and we'll have one for unsorded solid waste. If we were to add that, that would be a total of 3,300 stops, assuming that everybody participates. If we kept it twice per week, trying to collect trash cans twice per week at a residence, that would almost double that, which would include additional labor, a lot of trash collection, all day, every day, nonstop. And so it would increase to a lot of noise pollution and a lot of other services. This is not unique to this community. On the mainland, many other places are currently at a once-per-week collection service. So this would essentially align us with most of the rest of California. Commercial rates will be affected by a similar 50% increase in the number of collections. However, we're gonna be adding 100% recycling and 100% organics to all businesses. So they use common bins. The number of bins aren't necessarily gonna increase, but the amount of services will increase. I've got a little bit more and so hopefully I can get through this and then when I'm done, I'd be more than happy to take any questions. So essentially, the multiple family residence services is being proposed to go from twice per week to once per week and on an on-call basis for a nominal fee. CRNR will have an ability to either not collect commingled and contaminated solid waste or they can collect those contaminated containers for extra disposal costs. The incentive here is to ensure that people are complying with the requirements of SB 1383, separating their trash. And there are periodic audits that will happen, trash audits by CRNR, to ensure that people aren't commingling the sources that they're actually separating them out. We've got enforcement requirements that CalRecycle, the enforcement agency for SB 1383 requires. Finally, or not finally, but additionally, we also have a meet and confer requirement or provision in here if the city becomes eligible for an exemption. The exemption that we're currently pursuing is a low-population waiver for cities that provide solid waste collection services. In order to qualify for this waiver, the city has to meet two different requirements. The first one is that the jurisdiction has a total population of less than 7,500 people, which we definitely do. The second one is that the jurisdiction disposed less than 5,000 tons of solid waste in 2014 as reported in the disposal reporting system. For our jurisdiction, 2014, which was picked by CalRecycle and not necessarily picked by the city, we have to abide by that. That was our only year in the previous nine to 10 years where we had a spike in the disposal coming to the landfill. Its staffs, in meeting with CRNR's opinion, that a part of this anomaly was twofold. One, there was a Triana housing development project that was ongoing, which was a major housing development project which generated an abnormally high waste going into the landfill. And the second was infrastructure-related projects as a result of the cease and desist order that we were mandated by the state in order to remedy. So we had that sewer redlining project. We were replacing a lot of mains. That was occurring around the same time. We tore up a lot of our streets. We are currently in the process of auditing, so in order for us to file for this waiver, it's not a very extensive waiver. My understanding is it's only a two-pager. But we have to go back. We have to show all of the tickets. We have to justify why we believe there was an anomaly and we have to do our due diligence prior to submitting to CalRecycle. CalRecycle will then take a look at the case that we make, hopefully take that into consideration and then grant us the waiver. If they grant us the waiver, it essentially makes most of the provisions of complying with SB 1383 null and void, at which time we would go back, we'd meet with CRNR, and we'd revise heavily this Fifth Amendment as many of these provisions wouldn't apply anymore. Some of the requirements would continue to apply, especially the education and the outreach, making sure that we are doing our due diligence as a community in order to move forward with reducing, and it's in our best interest as a community to reduce the amount of waste we generate that gets to the landfill and that we end up diverting out. We only have a finite, limited number of space in that landfill and so anything that adds to that will greatly shorten that and will only impact future costs of that landfill because we'll have to barge everything out over town. Additionally, this Fifth Amendment adds the ability for multiple-family dwelling and commercial customers to apply for what's called a de minimis waiver if one of the following conditions are met. So there's two ways to qualify. The first one is that the total solid waste collection service is two or more cubic yards per week, and the recycled materials or organic waste is less than 20 gallons per week of the total waste. Or if you can't qualify that way, you can qualify by having your solid waste collection service less than two cubic yards per week, and the recycled materials or organic waste less than 10 gallons per week per applicable container of the total waste. So those, when these are implemented, multiple-family dwelling customers and commercial customers will be able to evaluate how much waste they're generating and then apply for a waiver if needed. And then last, this amendment addresses adding organic waste recovery, education, and outreach. It will help to develop and implement education information so that we are in compliance with SB 1383, that we're educating our haulers, our residents, our visitors on what the source separation requirements are, that we're establishing a public recycling depot for self-hauling and depositing of solid waste, recycled materials, and organic waste 24 hours a day, seven days a week without charge. So we are currently looking at sites where this would be a viable option through three separate bins where people, if they generated a little bit more, didn't want to call on an as-needed basis for additional pickup. CRNR would come down, I mean, it would service that. You could drop off your trash at the centralized depot without charge. So that would eliminate the need, so hopefully most people aren't generating. And again, it's not in our best interest to do so. And then it requires CRNR to produce written or electronic records or documentations of inspections and to maintain a database for all non-compliance incidents and investigations. CalRecycle will be very keen on auditing the city and our city's waste hauler, CRNR, for compliance, and they're going to want to see that we are indeed enforcing it, that we're conducting these inspections. We are encouraging people to comply, and we don't want to fine anybody. We want to make sure that people just get in the habit to separate their waste when they dispose of it. Just, you know, real quick, in terms of our revenue, you know, this has been presented, and these costs have been considered and talked about for quite some time. Originally, when Matt came to City Council and talked about the solid waste case rate and the justification for increasing, which Council subsequently adopted in June, we talked to, or Matt, rather, talked about kind of where our total reserves were. And this chart essentially is the one that he used, and it's showing that our expenditures were exceeding what our current revenues were. And in order for us to adjust that so that we were capturing fairly the cost of service with some of these expenses that were coming out, we needed to adjust the rates. So in terms of solid waste, city staff and overhead make up less than 10% of those projected expenditures in the solid waste fund. Most of these costs are associated with contracted collection and landfill operations, and they're really driven by three different things. And I'm going to go through, Matt presented this again in March and in June, but essentially they're driven by three things. One is the Senate Bill 1383 compliance. Two, it's the landfill closure and post-closure costs. And three, it's the costs that we had added in that were associated with landfill expansion. So in terms of the first one, I already started talking a little bit, 1383 is an unfunded mandate. We don't get funding in order to implement. We're just expected, just like every other jurisdiction in the State of California, to comply with this. So it does come at a cost. A lot of that cost is the transition to change from one container system to a three-container collection system. And that's, you know, blue for recycling, black for waste, and green for organics. In order to accommodate that, because of the increased stops and because of the increased manpower needed, because we can no longer use one trash truck to pick up all trash, we have to use one trash truck, pick up one stream, haul it over, bring back another and another three times for every single time. So that's where a lot of the cost is coming up from. If we don't implement this and if we don't change how we're collecting, CalRecycle can fine your jurisdiction up to $10,000 per day for failing to timely adopt these required enforceable mechanisms. It overall equates to approximately 12% of the city's current solid waste budget, and we're looking at $276,303 annually in the cost of compliance, which I know is not always easy to stomach. The second thing that's driving up these costs that was presented is the required landfill closure and post-closure funding. Right now, the post-closure costs are estimated at approximately $4.7 million plus annual inflation adjustments. The landfill trust has approximately $2.6 million and is expected to have annual contributions to the tune of $268,000 to $350,000 annually over the next five years. So this was a very significant cost, even more so than the cost of compliance with SB 1383 that is contributing to our solid waste case dramatically increasing up. I think it was 19% this year, 9% the following year, and then it drops down to 5 and then 3 because it stabilizes. There's a big ramp up at the front, followed by a much lower cost spread out over normal years. One of the things that's going to help with this post-closure funding is the following one, and that's really the landfill expansion. The landfill currently has approximately seven to 10 years of useful life left. The city has been exploring a number of strategies. We currently are working with our legislative firm, Townsend Public Affairs, to include some of these landfill earmark, costs into federal earmarks and state earmarks. So we have a couple proposals out there, but one of the easiest and the lowest hanging fruit is to look at amending the permit to increase the landfill height. Doing that would essentially add approximately another 10 years of useful life to the landfill. It would cost approximately $300,000, which sounds like a lot, but we're expanding out the life of the landfill from about seven to 10 years to almost 20 years, which would drive down the annual cost of the landfill contribution for the post-closure because now we've got an additional 10 years to contribute towards those required costs, in addition to pursuing other strategies such as engineering municipal solid waste and whatnot. The more we divert to with the implementation of SB 1383, it's also going to slow the amount of stuff that's going into the landfill because we're either composting the organics or we're diverting out plastics, glass, and everything else that we're currently doing. And then if we implement some of these others, waste to energy, anaerobic digestion, engineering municipal solid waste, will increase the density of those bales, will slow down the number of bales that are going in there, which will also contribute to extending out that life of the landfill anywhere from an additional 10 to 30 years. However, if our landfill does reach capacity and we don't implement any of these changes and we don't comply with SB 1383, a lot of that waste is going to come into our landfill. We're going to reach the capacity at a much sooner rate, and it's going to be required to be barged off the island, which would obviously cost considerably more from here on out if we weren't to do that. So I just wanted to give a little bit of insight, you know, hopefully none of these costs were, we've been talking about these for a while, I know it's a lot. I know that there's going to be some changes, some significant changes. One of the other things that we can do, if the council desires as well, is if implemented as proposed on the Fifth Amendment, we can review how that's going, assuming we don't get the waiver. Implement this come July 1st, 2022, which is when this amendment would take effect, and we would know the results of that waiver. Analyze how the current system is working with the centralized collection depot, and we can revisit that to amend, do an additional amendment if needed. So with that, I also have two representatives from CRNR here in the audience who are more than happy to answer any questions, as am I.
I have simple questions at this point. These are very simple questions. So I don't know how much two cubic yards is. How much is two cubic yards?
Two cubic yards? Mike Silva's probably a better guess.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Most of the dumpsters around town are three cubic yards. To give you a perspective of it, our blue dumpsters are typically threes.
Okay, so you might as well stand here for a minute. Thank you. You're going to have these three little dump sites placed around. I'm assuming you would want to have cameras on them because I can, I can just feel the abuse.
On the central depot, yes, we've been talking to Denise. I apologize. I'm Mike Silva, CRNR, I'm a civil engineer and the vice president. You know, wherever the location is, however we want to do that to monitor it, you're right. We don't want people to abuse it.
Okay.
You're spot on.
And then I'm a little, on these multi-unit sites, I mean, Soul Vista, for example, oh my goodness, they have, I think, two dumpsters there, and they're always teeming over with stuff. I don't know, and I don't know where you would put another one of your big dumpsters there unless you found another spot. I'm just looking, I should, I'm getting into the weeds, I probably don't need to.
No, 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 no. You're being logical. Hopefully, when we're all done, whether it's residential or commercial, the sum total carts and barrels are close. Hopefully, one of those dumpsters, say you have two trash, hopefully one of those becomes a recycling dumpster. So you're only adding one, not two. So that's the whole goal, is to public educate and add out, add recycling containers and take away trash cans. That's the goal.
Okay.
That's the goal.
Okay. And then if fines were levied, is that going to be your responsibility to collect them?
One more time?
If fines are levied, is that going to be your responsibility to correct them, or is that going to be responsibility of our code enforcement?
We'll be working in conjunction. They're responsible for helping to do site audits, and then we'll get the information, and then we'll work together.
Okay. And then the 20% of the, it seems to me that there's some things we need to start on, like the education, because some of that's just going to have to happen. You're going to have to have a green waste. And I don't know what you're looking at to have another, the green waste or whatever, because those are awfully big. For somebody like me, I'm hopefully, because you said something about a pail. So I hope there's a pail with a lid versus another whole big trash can, because, I don't know. Anyway, you're going to work out the logistics on that one, I am sure. But I guess, it seems like there are some, I'm all in favor of the waiver, and I'm hoping we pursue that. And if that is the case, and we can wait, I wonder if we don't have to do this whole agreement today, an amendment today, we just look at the things that maybe are going to have to be done in the very near future, like the education will have to start and whatever. And I don't know what dollar amount is associated with those before we say, let's get another truck, and da-da-da, because if we're wavered, I just don't know how it would change.
The city attorney can answer the question, but I believe, Ms. Mayor, it's drafted that way, that we don't do anything until the waiver is decided.
It is drafted. We have, if we are granted the waiver, then we would have to come back and we would have to amend the, strike out the provisions that don't apply, and we would renegotiate a portion of that. If we didn't do that, and let's say we apply for the waiver, it might take CalRecycle some time to review that, to issue a finding. If we wait too long in implementing an amendment and we're denied that, now we're starting back at square one, we're trying to renegotiate. There's still lead items and procuring trucks and cans and everything else that we need to, and we would be pushing the time for implementation prior to when enforcement action from CalRecycle takes into effect, because CalRecycle will start issuing out fines come 2023. They've delayed part of that enforcement provision, part of it. So that would, that would put us as a city in a much tighter bind.
I mean, but if, it shouldn't fall back on us to be fined if they're slow in reviewing the waivers and don't tell us till June 1st or something like that. There has to be some amnesty, I would think.
No. In fact, CalRecycle, just to give you an example, AB 939 had what was called a good-faith effort, and in SB 1383, the legislators had amended that to remove the requirement that CalRecycle use their good-faith effort requirement for its enforcement. So essentially, under 939, in order to be in compliance, cities just had to demonstrate that they were not necessarily meeting the goals, but they were making a good-faith effort to try to achieve those goals. That has been taken out, and under SB 1383, they basically have said, look, here's some hard, fast deadlines that you have to achieve, that all cities and all jurisdictions have to achieve. If you don't achieve that, you will not be in compliance. There is no such thing as a good-faith effort, and we have the ability to institute fines.
Okay. And just one other thing, and I know the other council members have probably lots to say, but just the whole concept of recycling, again, we still don't have, we haven't had in years and years and years the ability of people to get their CVR on their aluminum and whatever else there is. And I still really would like to see that happen because the people of Avalon have been getting ripped off for all this time. I mean, when they're buying 48 packs and 30 packs of bottled water every other day, and that's another 10 cents or a nickel, depending on the size, I mean, that's been tens of thousands of dollars that has not been made available to the residents of Avalon. And that's a CalRecycle question.
It is, and we will continue to follow up.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's all I have. Any other council members have comments or questions? Go ahead, Cindy. We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Sorry, hold on, Mayor. I'm going to, Mayor Protem, I'm going to go see if we can fix the audio on there.
Okay.
Go ahead now.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. You just hit my first topic, which was the CalRecycle and the fee that we're paying, the CRV fee or whichever that is. But, I mean, we've talked about that long before you and I were both elected mayor. So, I mean, we just keep saying, we're asking, we're asking, when is there going to be some conclusion to that? When is there going to be some, how many years have to go by?
So that's the first one. The second one is, is that if I understand this correctly, the top requirement for the SB 1383 that we don't already have in place is to develop and adopt an enforcement mechanism or ordinance by 2022. So it can't, do we, I mean, do we need to be talking about increases of fees and whatnot when it seems to me the concern that we have right now is the enforcement part?
We have an obligation to have an ordinance and amended code in order to actively enforce that, but CalRecycle is not going to be going after jurisdictions until, they're allowing a phased-in approach. So many communities aren't implementing this until the start of the new fiscal year because of some of the long-lead items. But once it gets implemented, we'll already have stuff on the books, and we'll be able to already go through an outreach and education campaign, letting people know this is what's happening on July 1st, when we start implementing this new system. And if you don't, as we continue to monitor and do spot-check audits, you run the risk then of being fined. I don't know why CalRecycle required that prior to implementing. And Scott may have better insight onto that.
So initially, when I had read through this, or skimmed through it the first time, read through it the second time, and kind of was looking at it this afternoon again, the contract that we're currently on, the amendment that we're currently on doesn't end until 2023. So I had intended to try to pull this item for a future meeting because if it wasn't due until 2023, then I think we have a lot of other things to talk about as well. One of the major concerns is less service and more money. And so I have to go on record for, you know, the 18th or 19th time now and just say, I'm really not in favor of increasing fees when we're reducing services. And part of increasing fees, you know, the property tax rule fees, was to help bridge the gap from the service that we were receiving and for what we weren't collecting. And so now we're talking about this extra amount. And I know that Assistant City Manager Palmer, I know you're probably going to tell me that you provisioned that for this particular increase, but I can't feel justified. you provisioned that for this particular increase, but I can't feel justified saying yes to increasing fees when we're actually blatantly decreasing the service. So I'd like to hear more about that.
I'll let Mike Silva talk a little bit more operationally, what goes into complying with 1383. What I would just stipulate is, as you had mentioned, one, that those fees were calculated as part of the cost of service. So we had already been in contact with CRNR. We needed to find out what it was going to take in order to come into compliance, the rationale behind that. And we came to the agreement early on in terms of, of operationally, what needed to be done in order to do that. Logistically, Mike could probably speak much more eloquently than I can. However, in terms of reduction of level of service, while we're reducing the number of days, they're still obligated to pick up the same volume of trash that they've been since then. We're not increasing the amount of trash, we're just decreasing the amount of days that it's getting picked up. And part of the rationale behind that is, there's not necessarily a need to pick up three days, because while right now, everybody is putting in trash into one container, now they're going to be diverting that into three separate containers. And hopefully, there won't be a need to pick up twice. And they're going to have the option to self-haul at no cost down to a central deposit if needed for any overflow, essentially. Or pay a nominal fee and have an additional pickup.
And I guess, let me just further illustrate that we're now going to go from one big bin to three bins per household, where we can barely handle one bin as it is per household, because those all have to be off-street. So, I mean, there are probably a couple hundred households that barely have space for one bin. And so I'd like to know, how do we plan to provision to have three bins per household?
Well, part of that is because the zoning has been allowed to build out to the property lines for zero yard setback. So when people are building out their houses to a zero yard setback, they no longer have the ability to accommodate additional trash receptacles. The other part of that is, there is the diminut, the ability to apply for a de minimis waiver. And that de minimis waiver is based off of volume of trash. So if they need a smaller receptacle, because they're not generating enough trash, either they can apply for a waiver to assist with that, or we can work with them to find a way to accommodate the added trash capacity.
Yeah, this is Mike Silva again. I would just add that, round numbers, we're doing two passes on 1,100 homes, so we're doing 2,200 collections. Even if we go to one day a week, I got to do three passes on 1,100 homes, going to be doing 3,300 collections. So my costs are going to go up from a collection standpoint. However, like you said, the sum total tonnage is going to be the same. We're not saving any money at the landfill or any of that. We're going to stop to process recyclables, process the compost, and process the trash. So that's that. Everybody's going through this, so you're not alone. You know, we do some other resort communities, like Balboa Island, they're going, they're going to a three container system, Costa Ma. Everybody's going to the three container systems, and everybody has the same challenges, space. And one advantage that you guys have is that a lot of your homes will have, will offer the organics program. A lot of them won't even generate any. They don't have yards or trees or things like that. So I know we're getting some exemptions in some of our other communities that are like this. Like I said, I use Balboa Island as the best representation of how Avalon's built. So Mike's got some, and the city attorney put in there, some of the de minimis, which is space and volume. So there'll be some exemptions, there's no doubt about it, but everybody's going to three containers statewide, good, bad, or indifferent, unfortunately, right now.
And Mike, can you just talk a little bit about what the cost potentially would be if we went to two days, kept the two days a week? Because we would essentially have 6,600 stops, and it wouldn't negate the need for an additional truck anyways.
Yeah, so yeah, it's a double-edged sword. You're gonna, again, unless you all want to fight with Cal Recycle and 1383, we're going to three containers. It's whether we pick those up one time a week or two times a week. If you go to two times a week, then you're going to 6,600 collections, I mean, you're probably going to add two or three trucks at that time. We added one truck, and the concept was really a half a truck resi and a half a truck commercial, because they have the same flavors now. And because we use a truck that's interchangeable, we kept it down to one truck. And we really, you know, we want to reduce the cost. There's no advantage of us raising cost just to raise cost, doesn't make any sense for us. So we're trying to keep them down. And we showed Mike and Denise, I believe it's in your staff report, our direct calculations. It was one truck, and off the top of my head, it was 52 hours a week and $100 an hour for two guys and a truck. So we showed you that. And then there's some minor costs for capital, which is we have to buy new carts and bins. But, you know, we try to keep it as low as we can. That's our goal, for all of our cities, not only you guys.
I just want to say for the record, that is not in our staff report.
I did not provide the total breakdown.
And so, how many trucks do we have on island now?
Oh, you know, to be honest, I don't know the exact number, because they don't all run. We have a couple spares. But we run about five, and we're adding one. And they're different, you got to remember. There's a little tiny one that runs down the alleys, there's a bigger commercial one, there's a roll-off that runs part-time, there's a sweeper that runs sometime. So it's a little bit of a mix.
I'm good for the minute.
Oh, yeah. Michael, do you have anything on your machine?
I have no comments that have come through.
Okay. Yes, Anya, Michael, Lisa, any comments or questions?
I have a comment. Would, would, would waste, garden waste or food waste, would that need to be picked up?
I didn't hear the last of that.
One more time?
The food or garden waste. That is something that could be picked up once a week, if we kept everything else at twice a week.
Actually, Mr. Ponte, I'd have to look into that, because it's going to, it's obviously better to stay linear. So we're going by the houses and doing the same thing every day, so that might be an operational problem. Yeah, I got to think about that one. That's kind of a curveball. We, right now, all of our cities, everything is routed linear in all my cities. So we don't have these off-and-on things. And they put it out this week, they didn't put it out the next day, and people get confused, and then it creates more problems. But we're not adverse to looking at any solution that works for all of us.
My big concern is that charging for more for less service. Especially that during, during this last two years, service has kind of sucked. We've had people who haven't had trash picked up on a regular basis and have to call in to have it kind of get picked up. So it's really hard for me to justify increasing the rate that much to diminish service. I just.
So again, help me out on when they're talking about increased rates going forward. It would be in addition to what?
No, so council already approved the rates. So that tonight's thing is more the amendment to the contract, and the rates have already been incorporated into this amendment.
Oh, so it's not an additional $276,000?
No, no, no.
Okay, is that understood? Was that understood?
We couldn't, couldn't understand, because it was.
I'm sorry?
We're getting echo out of the chamber.
Oh, yeah. So my statement was, and I don't know if you heard, the $276,000 has already been put into our rate structure. It's not an additional $276,000.
It's 276 additional on top of their existing contract, but that figure was already included into the rate case, the solid rate case that council approved in June of 2021.
The questions I have have to do with logistics. I know that you'd mentioned in this that you would offer a kitchen pail. What's the size of that?
It's literally a pail. I don't have a picture with me today, but it's literally a garden pail.
A countertop pail.
And it typically goes under the kitchen sink, and then they, you know.
Covered or not covered?
It's covered, yes.
Okay.
And it's made for that.
Sure. Having done this already in our house for a while and gathering organic waste, it's the difference between making it successful and a pain in the butt. The other question I have has to do with regarding residential and commercial recycling in this. The staff report states that if recyclables and solid waste is commingled or contaminated, CRNR reserves the ability to either not collect the material or collect the material in charge of the customer for extra disposal cost. I'm just curious to know how that is checked and assessed? And also, what happens for people who live on streets where there's a high level of pedestrian traffic and people just tossing things into cans, which happens all the time? And then on top of that, currently with the single can and/or double can use for recyclables and non-recyclables, it is extremely common to see the waste that people have currently not fit in those cans with the two-day-a-week pickup. So you have overflow, you have people that dump into other people's cans, and ravens and animals getting into them. The challenge of having this third can on a street and having that same issue happen with the food bin, I don't know if it latches, is there, I'm assuming it's the same flip-top as everything else, right?
Correct.
My concern of having bird access to get into those cans, and also having them overflowing and having them contaminated, seems like a pretty reasonable thing to expect. I understand the volume would be minimized, because you're splitting it between three cans instead of one or two. But the volume and contamination issue seems like it would be a greater issue because of where things are in the alleyways that people walk down all the time and throw stuff into, on the streets, in front of houses. As I was driving, I think this weekend, we were coming up by the Country Club Apartments, and they have, I think, eight or nine cans out in front, and it's just black cans, there's not recyclables, there's not green cans yet. I was looking at the building to see like, okay, well, you could go up the stairs maybe and have like that egress path blocked, and now you're blocking back onto the back section where they all kind of hang out and relax in the evening. And where do those all go without overflowing onto the sidewalk? So if you could address the no collection or the charge for collection, what is the nominal cost in your world, and how do we manage that or mitigate that?
Yeah, first of all, most of that verbiage is from the legalistic, from the Cal Recycle. We pick it, we pick it all up. You know, like I said, we service 55 cities and we have that contamination problem. And we have to have that in our contract, where we can flip lids. If it was completely contaminated, we can mark that bin to have someone take care of that. You know, we don't want to be the trash police either. We hope that recyclables are perfect and the green waste is perfect, but we know that's not the real world. So I would say 99.9% of the time, we collect it. If someone abuses it 10 times, we'll probably tag it and probably be talking to code enforcement to help us out with that. I would say the example you gave, where you have the nine black cans, hopefully, when we're done, if they do the proper separation, they'll still have nine cans, I'm not going to kid you about that. But hopefully, they'll have three trash, three recycling, and three green, but the sum total should be the same if we do the separation properly. But again, it's all statistics, and I know it doesn't work for every facility, it doesn't work for every home, we know that. That's just the real world that we're in with the trash business.
Well, and again, I think if you didn't, if the plastic and aluminum were able to go off somewhere else, that would take, those plastic water bottles and whatever, and all of those things take up a lot of room.
Yep.
So if there was another way for these folks to be able to get that and get their CRV, that would be great. The other thing that Michael Palmer pointed out the other day when we were walking around was down the alleys. The alleys aren't really intended for us to be able to put our trash cans out there all the time. We're supposed to have them on our property, and then when it comes trash day, then you move them out. So we've really kind of been abusing that. I mean, I even look at my little house and go, where am I going to put these? Well, I do have a gate that I have blocked, that I guess I could move that stuff and then, and then, you know, keep it at the side of my house and then move it out. So that exacerbates the problem with, like you're talking about, no setbacks, and then people have created that themselves, that problem themselves, really.
Are you ready for any chime pack?
Please.
Okay. So I think the concern that I had previously, which I still have regarding the fees, Mike Palmer, if you can just verify, back in June, when we were talking about the fee increases, that fee that the city council voted for one to increase those fees, that is this amount. So that's already a done deal.
Those fees were included in the cost of rate study, that's correct.
Okay, so that's already been done, there's no going back on that. We've already agreed to assess the fees to the president.
In terms of what you're looking, yes, for the solid waste fees, yes.
Okay.
That was the total amount factored into that study.
Okay. So then, some of the things that we've talked about tonight are not written in this staff report and not part of the agreement. It's all kind of a verbal thing. So I think what would make myself and members of the community who are very concerned about this, is if we send it back to staff and have the staff report in the agreement come back to us, that clearly states the things that we've talked about tonight. That lists out what happens if we get the waiver, that this extra fee doesn't need to be paid? Who decides the fines per Lisa's comments? Who's responsible for the compliance? What the fines specifically would be? Again, what happens if we get this waiver? How does that change the contracted amount? And I would also like to see specifically how the 24/7 system is going to work. Who's going to clean that up? Who's going to monitor that? Who is, if we're going to have somebody manning that 24 hours a day, where, where does that come from? And when that's going to go into effect? And how it will essentially work? I'd just like to see all of this in writing before we agree to this amendment.
So the comment that you made regarding what's going to happen, that is spelled out. I did not include every single provision. It was a general summary of the major issues that were addressed in the staff report. But many of the things that you're talking about are included in the actual Fifth Amendment. So the Fifth Amendment does have, it's the number 19, towards the end of the amendment, if the city receives a citywide exemption from the requirements of SB 1383 on or before June 30th, 2022, it may terminate this Fifth Amendment with written notice to the company, that would be CRNR. In such event, the Fifth Amendment shall be null and void. It also has a provision in there towards the beginning, where it talks about the fact that there is a meet and confer, and this is under 4.4.8. In the event that the city becomes eligible for a citywide exemption from the requirements of SB 1383, city and contractor shall meet and confer to evaluate the potential changes to the organic waste services and resulting cost reductions. Such changes and reductions shall be incorporated into an amendment to this agreement. So if we do qualify, and if we know we're going to be granted that, then this becomes null and void. But we will use this as the basis to amend and as a starting place to renegotiate which provisions continue to apply for that. So it is stated in the agreement. In terms of who's responsible?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm nitpicking it, because we also had the conversation that we may not know before June 30th.
I just can't guarantee that Cal Recycle, how long Cal Recycle will make to issue a determination. That was the only thing that I meant by that comment. We are actively right now preparing. It's a pretty short waiver requirement, it's only two pages, but we have to pull all the data, we have to pull all the tickets for why we spiked in 2014 above the 5,000 tons. And we've got to show them the cause for that, and to say that essentially that this was an anomaly, and then Cal Recycle has to review that, once we've collected it and submitted it. They've got to issue it, and we can either appeal that decision, or hopefully, they rule in our favor. In other communities, I know that process has been a couple months, I, we just can't guarantee that. And so we are recommending having an agreement that does go into effect and is in place, should there be a delay in the implementation. But if it does occur even after that, we do have the ability to terminate this agreement then, with written notice, and to keep some of the provisions that the waiver would not exempt us from.
Okay, can you just point me to? Okay, can you just point me to where we, it says in here, I, I'm uncomfortable with the June 30th, 2022 date, but where does it say at any time we can, we can pull the Fifth, this Fifth Amendment?
It's on the meet and confer on page six, it's 4.4.8. So while we are hopeful, and this has an effective date of July 1, which is why the last page had the target date of June 30th, there is a meet and confer, which we are actually currently engaging in conversation and actively pursuing now. Should this get implemented, it just codifies that and allows us to continue the course. But 4.4.8 on meet and confer allows us to evaluate potential changes as the result of, of a waiver, should we become eligible. So even if we become eligible after the implementation of this, it would allow us to go back and to renegotiate.
Okay, so then, I just want a ruling from the city attorney because it doesn't actually state that. The 4.4.8 states, yes, that if we become eligible for the citywide exemption from the requirements, then in number 19, it says if the city receives an exemption from the requirements on or before June 30th, it may terminate. So if I were, and I'm not a lawyer, but if I were going to argue this, I'd be, if I were CRNR and it's July 2nd, I'd say, hey, you guys didn't get it before June 30th, and so you've got to pay us this money.
And I'll allow Scott to weigh in on that. There's nothing that says right now that CRNR has to work with the city in order to move forward with an exemption either. We don't have anything codified in their existing contract.
Can you tell me, I'm, I'm trying to find that provision, the exact page it's on in the staff report?
It's on the Fifth Agreement, Scott, it's on page six under 4.4.8, and then the other provision that we were talking about was line item 19 on page 11 of the Fifth Agreement.
Page 61.
What?
Page 61.
61, thank you.
I mean, technically, we could do this Fifth Amendment and only have it go for the length of the current contract, which is June 30th, 2023.
Well, yes, you have to give, so let's talk about the bigger picture. You do have, this contract does end in 2023, it does provide that you can terminate it with a year's notice. So you'd have to make that decision, that decision, this year, to give, give the year notice. So you are looking at at most a, a year and a half agreement.
And then following 2023, you can either with written notice allow it to expire, or you could, you have two five-year option, renewal options, for a total of 10 years total.
So let me ask a question. If we got, oh, go ahead Cindy.
No, I just want Scott to answer the question, and then I have the four minutes of training thought.
So there is no, the meet and confer section just provides that in the event the city becomes eligible for it, that the parties will meet and confer. There is no date on, on which, there's no time limitation on which that provision says that that, that requirement expires. So we do have to meet and confer. What that doesn't mean though is that you have to actually agree to a contract or agree to amendment. It just says that you have to meet and confer. Yes, the parties have to have further negotiations.
Okay, so then, read number 19. If the city receives a citywide exemption from the requirements on or before June 30th, 2022, it may terminate this Fifth Amendment with written notice to the company. But that means we would have to receive it by then, and if we don't.
That is for the termination, that is for the termination of this contract. We have, the city has the absolute right to terminate this, this contract if you get that notice before that date. After that date, if you get notice, then you have the meet and confer required. And we, and we would be able to maybe negotiate a termination or a revision of the contract.
I think I would just like to see that.
Right, terminate beforehand.
I would like to see of the, of the written communications that I've received, those are some of the biggest concerns, is that it is not, items in here are not spelled out as well as they could be. So I would really, that's, I'm just stating my opinion, I would like to see some things in this contract spelled out a little further before voting on it. And I think pushing the conversation even two weeks still is in January, and I think we would have a lot of, of more time to make sure that what we're voting on, we all feel comfortable with.
So did the council receive more written communication than the one that was passed on to me from Councilmember Lavelle?
Right before the meeting today from Mayor Hernandez.
Please forward those to the city clerk and myself, so I could have it for the record, and we would know what you're referring to.
Thank you.
So, okay, let's say we get the waiver. I think as a community, and that would just put all this in the trash, right? If we got a waiver.
Yeah, most of it. There are still some requirements even with the waiver that you, as a community, have to.
Yeah, like the education and, oh, good, because I would still like to see that. I think we need to do our best to reduce emissions and that kind of thing. So I, I would hope the whole, the whole thing would not be thrown away. We'd still have to educate, still get the little, you know, stuff to put our compostables in, and that edible food distribution, which is that going to be your responsibility, Mike? Or is that ours?
I think that's jointly. I know we, we do a lot of the collection from our other cities, but the actual outlet of it is usually provided by the city, you know, what food bank it goes to, or what restaurant, or how they want to get it distributed, because you guys know the need better than we do.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask how, how and when do we plan starting this public education? And how we plan on also reaching the visitors with that, for hotels or rental homes? How are we doing that?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't pick up all of that.
How to educate not only the residents but the visitors?
Yeah, I mean, we can tailor the education part of that for any way we would like. We have a minimum to, audience of who we need to reach out to, and it includes all of the, the waste generators, which would include visitors, residents, businesses, commercial operators, haulers, et cetera.
Yeah, I would think the local education would actually be the bigger project. A majority of communities on the mainland already are doing a program like this, so visitors may be the easier ones to come around to this because it's already something they do where they live, so.
And we can do something similar to what we did with, under a Cal, a previous Cal Recycle grant, where we had done a PSA, there was a 30-second PSA and a minute PSA, but we still have those videos, and I talk about the importance of recycling and separating out and diverting stuff to our landfill, probably a lot of it be applicable. A lot of the labeling systems that they require are very explicit, similar to our commercial organic food waste diversion program, where we've got the types of food that should go into the types of containers, and we could roll that out throughout each one of our bins as well.
Good, council, it's a pleasure. Because Cindy's saying you want to extend this for a couple of weeks, but I don't, I'm curious how much can really get done in a couple of weeks.
I'm just asking for the items that I've listed to be spelled out more clearly in the contract, so I feel comfortable with exactly what I'm going to make a vote on. Because as it is right now, I'm going to vote no. So if we want to try for a yes, I'd like to see information spelled out further in the contract that makes it feel comfortable, that it's black and white, who's responsible for what, and how this is going to go. That's all I was asking.
Well, if that's the case, how long would it take staff and CRNR to get that information realistically?
Our, our part's quite simple, because it's, ex-Scott Campbell will be doing the drafting, but it's about fines and enforcement, and we, we don't issue fines and we don't write tickets, so it's however Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy wants that spell out, but that would be the city, the city attorney would do the clarification.
But that's, wait, Lisa, Lisa, can you reiterate your questions again? I was taking so many notes that I only got bits and pieces of it.
Sure, mine just had to do with regards to CRNR, and I think part of it was answered, part of it not quite yet, but CRNR reserves the ability to either not collect the material or to collect the material in charge of the customer for extra disposal costs. Just wondering what those costs are, and again, what the enforcement was, so it sounds like, based on that answer, that the CRNR would refer those people to, to code enforcement? And code enforcement would be the one enforcing that?
It is far from a legalistic standpoint. We, we tag the cans in all of our cities, but again, if someone becomes a chronic abuser, then we need the city's horsepower, quite frankly, to enforce the law.
First, it'd be through a warning system, and then for the more egregious, we would send code enforcement out following the trucks, and when they tag them, then we would issue a site.
So now we're taking code enforcement time to follow the trash.
These are periodic inspections that we're required to do. Again, it, the, the effort of this is not to penalize and not to write sites. What we're really trying to do is to educate and inform and change behavior so that people understand why these regulations came to be, why we're implementing them, and how they need to separate out their trash. So by tagging it, it's not necessarily that we want to fine them, what we want to do is put them on notice, there's an education component on that, so when they tag it, they also have to leave a flyer or some sort of educational pamphlet that says, you know, here's the rules, here's what you need to be doing with your trash. If they go by and they do these periodic waste things, and they notice that each time they go by, they're having, they're not able to pick up at certain addresses, that's when we would bring code enforcement out to do targeted enforcement operations at repeated egregious offenders.
So I think we have two options. Option number one is to vote on the contract as is tonight, we need three votes to do that. Option number two is to not vote on the contract and to direct staff to come back with language or proposed clarifications on items that council wants, and what I would ask is if that's the option, that you provide those to us in writing, so we make sure we have everything clear, and then Josh Nelson in my, in my office, who, all he does is trash, can work with CRNR to try and get this done in a, in a two weeks. So, but those are the two options. I'm really, but I just would remind people that this is a state mandate, and so we're, we are, we, we have to, we have to separate trash. I mean, that, it, it's over and done with. And so now we're looking at the best way to implement this at the lowest cost to the city, the least inconvenience to the residents, but also in compliance with what state law says we have to do for the environment.
So with, let's say we get the waiver. Okay, this would be my question. Let's say we get the waiver, then I think it would be nice to know what then we are still going to be doing, and what's the price tag for that? Like, do we still need to buy a truck if we're not doing this? Or maybe kind of figure that out, what, where the cost savings would be if?
If we did not, and the bulk of the costs is really in the truck and the manpower to, to enable it. Without the, i- if we were granted the waiver, the bulk of the source separation requirements, we would be exempted from, at least at this time unless they changed any of the requirements to SB 1383. So the bulk of those costs would be immediately wiped out. We wouldn't need to have another truck, and we wouldn't need to increase the number of staffing in order to accommodate the, the collection, and it'd essentially be, for all intents and purposes, business as usual, with the exception of.
Well, with, with, let me just clear, because I always have to give council options. Even if you get the waiver, you may still decide as a matter of public policy that for the environment, you still think makes sense to separate trash and that's a big pain.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would chime in on that. That's a great point, because not only for the environmental benefits of it, but for the landfill savings, because obviously we're on an island, and we've only got one landfill.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's my biggest hesitation, and I don't mind Cindy if we wait for two weeks and get further clarification, but the majority of this we're required to do. The majority of it makes sense to do. I understand the price tag challenge, and we had the same discussion in June with the prices and what that would mean, and, you know, it would be nice to receive the waiver even if it means a deferral of time. I have some concern that our, our usage over the 5,000 mark may still come into play with the construction that we have upcoming, because there's a lot of major infrastructure projects that we're going to be working on soon. And so I don't know if that waiver is triggered or is reviewed annually or every five or 10 years, or whatever that is, but I would assume at some point we're going to surpass that amount to be able to remain with that waiver because of growth.
Yeah, but right now, we're only having to show them like 2015, 16, 17, we might look okay. But I hear what you're saying, if we do the, this and, you know.
Right, if it's the Mole Project and housing projects and other things that are much more massive than what we've done previously, we're probably going to hit that level again. I don't, I don't know what the stipulation for that waiver is, how long that, that manifests for, but I, I think that most of this ultimately is for the community's benefit overall. It feels like a big old sock in the gut to start with, but it's, there's reasons that it's beneficial, so.
Then again, I appreciate the fact, go ahead Cindy.
Sorry, Mike Palmer, in the staff report, it says the new subsection was added, giving CRNR the option of establishing, the option of establishing a public recycling depot for self-haul. Where, in the staff report, it says there's an option to do it, it doesn't say that they're going to do it, but can you tell me, I'm trying to find it in the, and I feel like I'm running out of time, so I'm, I'm stressed trying to find that in the, what, where is that subsection?
Yeah, give me a minute.
Are you talking about the public recycling drop-off?
I am.
It's on page eight at the top, it's number 13.
Yeah, thank you. It says, "Public recycling depot, in lieu of providing twice-weekly service, collection services, company or CRNR shall establish a public recycling depot located at, and then its address to be determined, where anyone can self-haul and deposit solid waste recycled materials and organic waste 24 hours a day, seven days a week, without charge. The city manager may approve or direct adjustments to the hours of operation with written notice to the company."
Okay, so in the agreement, it does say shall.
Yes, yes, it does.
Say will.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's if they, that's if they, yeah, right.
You're going to be collecting Christmas trees next year, huh?
That was one I was going to mention. Herb site.
But you know what, is that something that the conservancy likes to get those trees?
I don't think they're using them anymore.
Not anymore? Oh, yeah, I, I have a plastic one. Okay.
And then, I guess, one more question, how, so this is basically, we're, we're really talking about residential collection, because there's no real way to know who's throwing what into commercial bins or all along front streets, correct?
Yeah, the, the commercial will follow a very similar pattern, Ms. Cassidy. We'll have a recycling bin, a trash bin, and a organics bin for the commercial. So it'll be very similar system, but obviously much bigger bins. And they do a lot of sharing, so it'll be a little strategic doing that. But the same thing, I, I can't remember who said it, but you know, if there's seven bins now, hopefully there'll be four trash and two recycling and one organics, or whatever the math works out, depends on who uses that. That's the logistics we have to work out, but again, every city's going to three bins, resi and commercial.
And commercial's still subject to audits, right?
Yes. Yeah, it's not an easy implementation for any city. All right, we totally understand that, we know that.
So then, if there seems to be a consensus, we'll send this back to staff to make the changes, throw that information in there and see it. changes, throw that information in there and see it back in a couple of weeks, and if you have any other questions, I guess we can only respond to the things we brought up, right? Or should we, if we come up with something, we should we send it your way? Come up with something else?
Yes, and I think Scott asked the council to please send their questions, if that's what you're choosing to do.
Okay, is that what we're choosing to do, council?
As far as fines, I don't know if we could be specific in the agreement on what the fines are. That would have to be in our city ordinance, correct, Scott?
They, they are in our city ordinance when we adopted it.
We've already established in your ordinance what your fines are for, uh, I think it would be the same fee ordinance unless you've got something specific in your track ordinance. Dealing with this, it would be, you know, your, what your normal fines are for code enforcement.
Okay.
And then can we also get a copy of the presentation from this evening to review as well before the next meeting?
That's your PowerPoint, Mike.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your PowerPoint. Thank you.
Okay, is there a consensus to hold it over then, what changes? Okay, okay. Shaking heads, all right. All righty.
We're all set?
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Palmer, just because you're gonna be in Rancho Cucamonga doesn't mean that you cannot appear as a member of the public for this item in two weeks.
I tried, Scott.
Okay, item number nine.
Item number nine is a discussion regarding the establishment of a minimum number of nights for transient rentals. Uh, the city council, at its regular meeting on November 16th, adopted the recommended penalties for illegal transient rentals. Uh, this was, uh, based off of a recommendation, uh, over the course of several months' discussion from the planning commission. At the same time, they were discussing the penalties for the illegal transient rentals. They also considered establishing a minimum number of nights. However, they elected not to move forward with a recommendation to proceed forward with establishing a minimum number of nights for transient rentals due to the transition from, uh, regulation of transient rentals from a conditional use permit to a licensure structure. They felt that there was already inherent costs that were associated with it, and they had ongoing annual renewal requirements that, uh, new applicants would be required to move forward with, uh, and so they could not recommend that. However, at that November 16th city council meeting, council requested the minimum stay per calendar year for transient rentals returned to a future agenda item for some additional discussion and consideration. In preparation for this discussion, staff researched the number of similar resort oriented communities for how short-term rentals are regulated for the minimum stay durations. This was included in the staff report. Uh, there's a chart that lists out by city and by requirements what that is. Overall, many cities don't replace a minimum or a cap, however, there are a few notable exceptions, particularly in the Coachella Valley. Uh, there, they've got a maximum number, uh, cap, and sometimes it's regulated by just the seasonality of the Coachella Valley. They tend to have a lot more events in the springtime and in wintertime, and that's when a lot of their rentals are there. The minimum night stays are frequently established in many communities to help reduce the use of transient rentals for events and parties and their associated nuisances, nuisance issues. These would be things like constantly addressing noise, parking, trash issues. Additionally, minimum night stays have been implemented to assist in limiting transient rentals and home stays due to the caps that are placed on there. Depending on available resources, enforcing these could be difficult. Should council decide to change the current requirements, one consideration would be to allow some period of time to pass before implementation of the new regulations, like the council did for the conversion of CUPs to licenses. In calendar year 2019, the city generated approximately 1.6 million in revenue from TOT for short-term rentals. In the calendar year 2021, the city received approximately 2.1 million in TOT. So, uh, it's a little hard to compare the previous years, they've been a little bit more of an anomaly. We've definitely seen a spike in the hotel TOTs and the other TOTs here. However, a recent audit of the city's records did show that we have approximately 413 transient rental, either CUPs or licenses on, that are active. Fifteen of these are regulated by transient rental licensure, 398 are regulated by conditional use permit. Staff is seeking direction based off of this information on to whether council would like to pursue one of four different options. Option number one would be to implement the planning commission's recommendation and continue the transient rental program as is and not require a minimum stay per calendar year for transient rentals. Option two would be to establish a minimum stay either per calendar year or a minimum duration stay, such as a two minimum per booking, two-night minimum per booking for transient rentals. Option three would be to establish a maximum stay per calendar year for transient rentals, similar to what other communities have done. Or option four is to, uh, look at a hybrid approach and, um, you know, combine them either with like a maximum stay along with a minimum night booking, um, or, or such. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
And one additional comment I have is that whatever provision change you were to consider it would apply to all transient rentals, which therefore would apply to, um, all properties, and therefore this matter concerns the public generally. And there's some recent cases by the FPNC that limit council members' ability to participate in decisions regarding transient rentals, but because this, these particular provisions would apply to all transient rentals, um, and all potential properties becoming transient rentals, it applies to the public generally. And so like all council members should be able to participate without conflict with these issues.
Okay. Anybody have anything to say? Start off besides me. I asked, you wanna start?
Sure. Well, I, um, in discussing this with not many people, but some people, my only hesitation is in implementing a required number of nights or a minimum length of stay is that we don't do that to other- Can you guys hear us okay? Yeah?
Number of nights for a minimum.
I'm a little, okay. Um, we don't require that of other, uh, businesses that are similar in collecting TOT, and so my hesitation is singling out one type of entity for that. Um, I thought it was funny that Palm Springs only lets you have 36 contracts for transient rental stay as a maximum, that you can only do 36 stays as opposed to every night of the year if you wanted to. So that was kind of interesting to review. Um, I think part of the reason this was brought back, and Annie, maybe you can speak to this, was because of wanting to look at the potential for revenue, which is one part of the puzzle, and the potential for the issue of saturation and limiting people in a certain neighborhood because other people have transient rental licenses or CUPs, and then feeling like this new person can't get one because everyone else around them has one already. Um, and that if they're not using it to the best of their use, then is it fair for that person who's coming later to the game to not get one when everyone else has one but isn't using it properly or isn't making use of it? I don't know if it's possible, and maybe city staff can ask, answer this question, if it's possible to have the level of use or the revenue from individual units provided when planning commission is looking at approval or disapproving of a new license? Um, if that is something that can be offered for the area that normally is the scope of, um, influence in terms of deciding what saturation is, that that may allow us to have a full picture of, well, this person only used this for two nights and they only brought in this much revenue. It doesn't feel like as much of an imposition on the community as someone where, you know, it's Hamilton Cove and they're literally rented every single night all around you. Not Hamilton Cove because of the difference in their, how we, how we grant those, but it, it feels a little off to require that of them, but then it also feels like it should be part of the decision process in new ones, that maybe they would not be denied the right to have that license if we knew that other units weren't impacting the neighborhood crazily. Does that make sense?
So you, yeah, so you can't ask as part of the land use process how much money they'll, they'll bring in, that would not be an appropriate factor. You can, though, ask people, you know, what their intended use is of, the issue is your ordinance doesn't provide for that right now. So the only way to require that and to have people do that is to amend the ordinance to provide that that information be submitted when they're applying for, um, the transient rental license, remember their licenses there.
Gotcha. And then that's the other part is, I don't, I mean, there's nobody that currently requires a minimum amount of funds to come from units to be able to establish this, and so I don't know what the legality of that is, Scott, if there is the ability to even do that of like if you don't have a minimum of $500 in TOT per year or a thousand, whatever dollar amount we're looking at. It just feels like we're on a little bit of a, an odd slope requiring from a private, like a private business.
Again, I'm not comfortable imposing regulations that are tied to fees. It's more a, a use of property. You know, how, how is a property, how many nights is it used? Um, remember that one thing is if you would, if you were to post a minimum requirement, let's say five nights, let's say 10 nights, um, you would have some people drop off. Uh, you may also have the people, um, increasing the use of their property, um, to maintain it, and then so one issue would be there'd be more transient usage and perhaps more neighbor complaints, although we don't really have, we don't really have a lot of neighbor complaints in Hamilton, but actually we've-
Well, and one other comment that Lisa made is, you know, we can't regulate how other businesses do their business. However, and I can use Chet's as an example, I don't think Chet Tarver would want to be open to lose money, because if you ever wanted to sell your business, you would want to show that you make a good profit. That's not the case with the CUPs. They're holding on to them, not generating any money, and will still get more money when they sell. So it's, there's a difference in my mind. So I don't feel like we're singling them out. But I just, it, I think it's ridiculous that we charge them $53.50 to have that CUP every year. I mean, my business license for what is my receipt is 190, 300? Oh, no, it's a chamber.
I'm not, Annie, I'm not understanding the requirement of having to have them do a minimum. If they're not, if they're not using it, they don't have people coming over and using infrastructure, and have people using water, saltwater, trash. They're not taking away, other than they own a CUP or their property. I, I, I understand having too many nights. I don't understand having to have a minimum, because all of the things that we were sent were cities where that are controlling how many nights those units can be used, not you have to use them this minute, many nights to use it. I don't see the need for changing the way it's set up. I really don't. Because it's not, it's not gonna open up a house for somebody who's gonna want to sell their house and somebody in town buying the house. It's not gonna do anything like that.
I understand, and I understand about the, the, the impact on the infrastructure that they have, um, or they don't have, if they're, if they're not renting it out. But again, at some point along the line of saturations, because I know around me, we did, there was one denied next to me, and, um, but if somebody else wasn't using theirs, perhaps they would have been able to get theirs. And somebody else then who buys a piece of property and wants a CUP on it, um, they would be able to have it if, if it's that saturation issue, which we don't even know what saturation is at this point. So I wanted to bring it up. I, I think it's ludicrous that they pay $53.50 for a business license, um, when every other business pays a lot more. I don't know if you know what your business license is, Cindy, for Chet?
I do, and I think that maybe it might be better served to, if it's increasing the license fees, then that should come when we talk about fees in May, June. So I, I think, Mayor, I am with Councilmember Ponce on this, on the minimum number of nights, and it, and it just took me until your comments now to kind of catch up to what you're, what you're kind of going for with this. I believe the business license fees should be the same for all concerned. So I'd like staff to help remind us to bring that back, um, when we talk about the fees themselves. I do view the transient rentals as being, um, sort of, you know, it's an owner's right to choose whether they want to make something that they own into a business, provided that the city has given the go-ahead to do that. If we feel that we have too many transient rentals that, you know, potentially take away from the housing stock, then we need to have that conversation separately. If we feel that we're trying to make more, if we want to see the city have more revenue from those business licenses that we have extended, then we would obviously be encouraging people to do more rentals because they would have more transient tax that comes into the city's coffers.
Right.
So I, um, I don't want to be in a position where we're saying, you know, a minimum or a maximum number of nights. I do agree with Councilmember Lavelle that we shouldn't do something for one person that we're doing, that, that we're not requiring for another. But, but if it's, if it's revenue generation based on the business licenses, I am all for bringing that back and changing those fees to be fair to all concerned for all business owners, because I do pay three times that much for my business license.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, you know, I've been talking about this for a long time, I'm glad it's just up, so now if it dies, Lisa's put to rest. It's one of those things that are off the board for, forever how long? But you know, I mean, when you look at this, the top five revenue generators for transient rentals, one person, we get $28,000 a year. And then the other person with the CUP gives us $12 a year. It's just, you know, um, so hip, hip, hooray for the people that are really generating wonderful income for the community and also then for the Chamber of Commerce. So, okay. So I think this is, go ahead, um, yes, Cindy?
I definitely would like to bring this up with the fees or increase the fees, uh, just maybe make this process a little bit more difficult, just knowing that there's two, maybe three families trying to live together in one apartment while we have homes that are just empty most of the year, just does not sit right.
I know, but we can't tell people what they can do with their property, sadly. One oh? I mean, maybe it's not sad, it's just-
I mean, there is other discussions that can be had along those lines. I mean, we do it with the vehicles, we have a maximum number. One falls off, one can, can apply, and we, you know, a waiting list, you know, I, I don't know if, that's obviously a whole nother conversation that I'm not advocating for, I'm just saying there's other options to talk about if those are the concerns of the community as a whole.
And I agree with Cindy that if we are looking at, you know, making this more revenue in having a business license for a CUP, I think we look at it when we do fees and increase that and actually put some teeth into it. It, it is kind of silly that it's only $53. That just, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And then, okay, let me just ask you another question, because the, the cost of a transient rental business license is $53. But if I have a CUP, it's still a transient business license? Because that's a permit. But they, so whether you're-
Wait a minute, I think the issue is every year you have a business license for operating the business.
Right.
That's what the fee is for. You still have the fee to go ahead and get one, because that involves a public hearing, et cetera. et cetera.
I understand. No, I guess my.
So transient rental license, they pay an annual renewal cost for that transient rental license plus a renewal cost for the business license. And they're essentially, they involve the same staff time and processing, so they're the same. So transient rental license holders would pay the 53.50 for the transient rental license and the 53.50 for the business license. However, CUP holders will only pay 153.50 for the business license.
Yeah, they don't have to pay the other.
That's correct. There's no annual renewal cost built into the CUP because it's a land use entitlement.
And we can never change that because that's all grandfunded.
Well, we, we can change that and that is changing. So at any time a property sells, they're allowed to transfer at once. Any subsequent, it automatically sunsets. So eventually, when properties change hands, so if they sit on their property and they wait for it, there shouldn't be any perceived, there shouldn't be any perceived additional value to that because anybody can now apply for a license and you can only, as the first time buyer, have that property, property CUP transfer with you. But if you wanted to transfer that again to the, to your next buyer, it would, it would expire.
And they have to come, okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you for all of your input on this one. Appreciate it.
Do we need to make any kind of motion or?
No.
We just gave direction not to do anything.
Exactly. Other than to look at the fees when we get to budget time. Okay. Item number 10.
Okay, item number 10 is a request for proposal and transfer at Joe Machado Field Concession Stand discussion continuation. I'll just do a brief little timeline. This is, was covered at the December 7th council meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at that meeting. So in September of 2015, the city council did authorize the RFP that went out to be awarded to Ivan Leyva. And then a little over four years after that, Matt and Ivan notified the city formally in writing that they would like to transfer it to Matt Alfalter. And that was for a seamless transition and it was authorized by the city council. And then the contract was executed with Mr. Alfalter. Then 18 months later, Matt had provided a formal written request to the city to authorize a transfer to a certain individual, which is Frank Rojo, and who was a City of Avalon employee. And then that came to the council on December 7th. The city council denied that transfer and followed staff's recommendation. And I was the one, I will say staff, but it was me, that strongly encouraged the, to go out for requests for proposals and not have it transferred, particularly for two reasons. And that was that we wanted to provide a reliable and consistent service, which, and then hopefully not keep coming back every couple of years for the council to do something with Joe Machado Field concession stand. And I didn't think it was appropriate at all to transfer a lease to a City of Avalon employee because if I was somebody else out there in the community that's been waiting for that concession stand to open up, I would like that opportunity. So that's where I was basing my thoughts on that. And then, so that was on December 7th. And then on December 17th, we did release the RFP. Five days later, Mr. Alfalter had contacted me at City Hall. We went over his options because he wanted to be able to be heard. And unfortunately, on the December 7th meeting, he was not properly notified that that item was on the agenda, so he did not have an option or an opportunity to speak to the council. So he did send all the council an email requesting, you consider either canceling the RFP or delaying it and having an opportunity to address the council. So that's why we are here this evening and Mr. Alfalter is in the audience.
Okay. Would, would we like to hear from Matt first? Counsel? Yes. Matt, you want to come up?
Thanks, counsel. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the council and all the members of the city that I work closely with. It's been dozens of meetings and a long three years since we first began this process. There's been an incredible amount of work put in by the council and other city staff. And I just wanted to acknowledge, appreciate, and thank everyone that participated. We've been through a lot since we first started, including a worldwide pandemic. As an entrepreneur, my companies were not immune. I had to put a lot of time and money to keep everything afloat. Once we opened back up, we were faced with the new challenge of finding and keeping staff, not to mention the legal quagmire that is the LA County Health Department. We overcame those challenges and secured legal street vending permits that less than 1% of street vendors in LA County can get. To give you a number, I was number 68 out of around 10,000 street vendors. This is an incredibly hard feat to accomplish, but we did it. And we did it legally. I believe the foundation that I have laid will allow another owner operator to come in and prosper. I've had three offers to purchase my company outright. This means the permits, the cart, and the remaining lease. I haven't been able to sell it because the people that have offered to purchase it are not on the list, even, even though some of them are low income. If someone from the list wants to pay me for it, I'd gladly sell it to them, but so far, no one from the list has agreed that they will. More so, I'm not even sure if anyone that is low income could foreseeably run the company. Because of this, I would like the same process afforded to me as was to Ivan when I purchased it from him two years ago, which is to be allowed to sell the company to the person of my choosing. I'm asking for the same price that I purchased the company for, even though I've added considerable value to it. I spent $5,000 on the remodel of the sports storage area and the purchase of a new shed for the sports equipment to go in. I've spent over $5,000 to secure a number of additional permits, including the commissary permit, the LA County part permit, a beer and wine permit, a vehicle permit. All in all, I have over $40,000 invested into hard assets like the cart, the vehicle, and the permits. If those permits are not transferred, the new applicant will have to start at the beginning. For us, that was an 18-month journey, which included multiple blueprint reviews and inspections. If a new vendor takes over and doesn't transfer the permits, they will not be allowed to operate until they are approved.
Mayor, can I, can I just stop this a minute? Because this sounds more all about the vending cart and not the lease that we have. These are two separate issues. And it's not properly notify, noticed if we were going to be talking about a vending cart and changing any vending regulations that are already in our municipal code.
Okay, so it's just, it's just verges. We should be.
This is about verges now.
Okay. So to close, I'm simply asking to be treated the same as Ivan was. Will the council consider allowing me to sell my permits to the person of my choosing, as was done last time with Ivan, or if not, that the person whom the city chooses will pay me for the permits and the infrastructure? Thank you for your time. I'm open to any questions that you have.
Which is for the vending cart. That's what you're really trying to recoup, right, Matt? Which I would love to be able to help you, but that is not at this, at this.
They're, for me, they're kind of interchangeable because one needed to be done for the other. And I think that if anyone is, if a vendor's going to go into it, that they need to be aware of both and to utilize both. And that's pretty much due to LA County Health Department.
But if a person puts in a request for proposal for Joe Machado Field concession stand, that's all they're putting it in for. If somebody wants to combine it and they're the next person on the list for our vending food part of it, or it goes on down to the next person, and I know there's three other people on the list, then the person who has the concession stand, they can allow them in their commissary. The major cost that you absorbed, it sounds like it was all for the cart and the revamping of our, the athletic area where you were able to park your cart right now, and then the purchasing of an extra shed because of all our tools and equipment went outside. Is that correct?
That's a fair amount of the value. There's about 6,000 that goes into permits that deal with verges specifically.
And if, so it's the same thing when you took over, you still had to transfer beer and wine. So that's a cost that somebody's going to have to absorb. They just, they'll have to apply with LA County. They'll have to apply with LA County for the, the Health Department to be able to do the business up there at the concession stand and, what was the other one? Business license with the city. Everybody would have to do that also.
Correct. But if the permits, if I allow them to transfer, they can be open in the interim. And I think that's been important.
You did transfer the beer and wine from Ivan Leyva, correct?
I didn't. I had to get a new one. It was already expired by the time I got in there.
I'll have to look at that. I don't know.
Did you read the staff report here that was put together?
I didn't have a chance. I just kind of looked over it quickly before the meeting.
Wait, so the person that was supposed to get this transfer to doesn't want to do it anymore, right? They want to join the RFP process?
That is my understanding from the employee that was named in the, in the staff report, Frank Rojo, yes. I did provide counsel with the timeline for the RFP, so we haven't received any yet because that timeline is not here yet.
I just wanted to make one more comment if I could. And this kind of ties verges and the cart together. What the LA County Health Department told me is that you cannot operate a cart without access to a commercial kitchen.
Yes.
And that person who owns the commercial kitchen has to be the same person that owns the cart. And I asked them again and again, can I sublet? Can I do this? And the inspector, Sharon, I forget her last name, basically told me in no way will they allow that, that the owner of the restaurant has to be the owner of the cart, at least for any type of non-prepackaged cart.
And I cannot verify if that is.
Yeah. I think that's, that's a good question because over town, they have these commissaries where everybody brings their carts in. So that's not the same person who owns the cart as the person that owns the commissary. So I don't, that's something, that's a good question. But in the staff reports, it's public knowledge, it says that Mr. Rojo is not interested in purchasing the business. So my only thing is, my question, and that's why it makes this important, is because if Mr. A gets it and he says, but I don't want to make the commissary available for people if it is legal, that is where I'm concerned because we're involved in this whole statewide program. And we could just say, okay, well, we don't have a commissary because they don't want to sublet or they don't want to do anything with it. So that makes that dead, correct? City attorney?
Well, it, it, it makes it dead for food required to be prepared by, in a commissary prior to the sale.
Yes.
I, I think what, what, what was mentioned earlier is that reality is that he's one of only 1% of people actually doing, and has actually gone out and actually gotten the county permit. Right, Matt?
Correct.
Is that your point, that 99% of the people selling hot dogs and stuff are operating without the proper permits?
Correct.
They, they say in the news that they can't keep track of all of the people, you know, I mean, the thousands of people that are on the streets of LA and at Long Beach and everywhere else. There's no way they can keep track of all of that. So, but unfortunately, we're a little small town. Okay, let's talk again about just transferring a lease, okay? If Mr. Rojo or anybody else doesn't want to buy that lease, at some point come February 23rd, right? February 28th, the lease is, would expire anyway, right?
Correct. We did have a walkthrough with, with Mr. Alfalter through the Joe Machado Field part. We, he opened the door to the vending cart area. He did turn over the keys to us after we made sure everything was clean and emptied, except for the vending cart section. And so the only key that Matt has left, I believe, is for his vending cart area. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
So in essence, his, his lease has terminated. We have not received rent from Matt since his last payment. So September and on, we have not received any rent.
And that is correct, too. That's when I had originally brought it to Mr. Humke to let him talk about a transfer. And he told me it was an ongoing process and that it would be resolved before he left. But that didn't come to fruition, unfortunately.
I have emails starting in September 30th between Matt and Mr. Humke, yes. And, but I've been very firm since the beginning, so I don't know what happened with the communication between our community services director and Matt. But from the get-go, it was, no, we are not, we will be recommending to council to go out for an RFP and not a transfer to a City of Avalon employee.
That wasn't communicated to me in that way. The way it was communicated to me, which may be different than it was communicated to others, is that we were working on a transfer.
Yeah, I can't respond to that.
The only recommendation that I have, and I discussed this with Mr. Alfalter before the meeting today, is the possibility of recommending that the future late leasing work with Mr. Alfalter if they were wanting to secure those permits faster. But I don't believe, and Scott, this was a question for you, I don't believe we can require that that be a part of the RFP, right?
Well, you've already sent the RFP out. I don't, I don't, I don't know if it would be appropriate to require, I don't think it's appropriate to require someone bidding to purchase someone else's business. I think you have some, some real problems there. You can, though, this is an RFP. This is not a situation where it's someone who's, who's the lowest bidder gets this. So as part of that proposal process, when you're evaluating those responses, you, you are able to look at the whole package of businesses that they'd be bringing to the site in your determination as to who to give the lease to.
Right. And I think that's the only part that I think would be beneficial for the future person that receives that RFP, that wins the RFP, is that they would be able to potentially go into operation much faster if they were to purchase that. But because it wasn't originally included with the RFP, because I don't think we can require them to have to purchase it as part of this package, that maybe the direction we can take is to recommend that they do. But I, we have no, there's no actual legal standing for us to, to require them to have to do that.
So let me just ask a question, hypothetical. So I rent space out, let's say I'm Ellie's Deli. And she has a lease to utilize our property, right? Okay. And I don't know how long those leases are, five years? I don't know how long our leases are with just anybody. So it comes up and then I decide, oh, I don't want to be, I don't want to be in business anymore. So I would tell the city, I don't want to be in business anymore, right? I would want to sell that business, which I could. And, but do we, okay, but then the next person, so Lisa buys it from me, do we have to check out Lisa before she can take over that business?
Yes, you have, so under your lease, if someone wants to transfer the lease prior to determination, the city has the right, because it's going to be a city tenant, to okay that using good faith determination. In addition to that, because the city is now getting a new owner for that, if it accepts it, your leases provide that the city gets a fee, which is based on a percentage of the purchase price. So I think it's, I think it's maybe 5%.
3%, 3% up to $30,000.
3%, okay. Yeah. So the city gets a. Yeah. So the city gets a fee, and that's to cover, you know, the city's analysis of this, and the fact that you're bringing in a brand-new tenant that you don't have previously had a relationship with, maybe you haven't vetted as much. But we do have the right under, under your lease to approve a replacement tenant.
And most people, if I, if I have a lease, typically, the amount of that lease, a lot of times, it is dependent on how much time is left on that lease as well, correct?
Correct, the value, yes, yes.
Yeah. So this lease has only got, you know, six weeks left on it or whatever. Um, I don't know where I'm going, but I'm just trying, I mean, I would love if Matt were to be able to, be able to get, recoup some of his money. I just, I'm not, I'm just not seeing how that can be. Because all we have...
Well, I think it's not prohibiting him from doing that.
What's that?
It's just a matter of, you know, if he can sell it, and he can sell licenses to someone, that will, that may put him in a better position on the RFP, but we're not, we can't really mend it.
Right, I understand, yeah. Okay, so before us is what the staff is recommending to proceed further with the authorized and published RFP. In the timeline, is there, is there counsel comment about, um, not putting the RFP, not putting out the RFP, or retracting the RFP?
Well, I guess the RFP's already out.
I mean, so retracting the RFP.
Correct, to pull the RFP.
Yeah. Is there anybody, anybody in favor of, of pulling the RFP?
So I want to just point something out to the mayor.
Yes, please.
And to the council. On page four of the RFP, there is a section, it's section B, four B, it talks about street vendor cart accommodations. Do you have that?
I'm sorry, what page again? I'm sorry.
Uh, page four of the RFP. Section B.
Yes.
Just that we put a caveat in on street vendor carts. And there's also the, um, ability of an RFP to, um, we can waive any irregularities. I believe that's how we worded in our RFP. So if, say, somebody, uh, Lisa Lovell decides she wants to put in an RFP, but she's not next on the list, but somebody else gets a concession stand, and if L.A. County allows us, or allows the street vending person to use that concession kitchen, I have to find out about that.
Okay.
So we did, put a caveat in there that they could have that space.
Okay. Some of you are awful quiet.
I think in the last council meeting, I was not in favor of going out to the RFP just for the sake of wanting to, um, you know, continue operations and not be down for several months. Um, but the, the reality is, Denise is correct, that it is politically and, and sort of irresponsible for us to, to just transfer without, especially to a city employee, uh, and I'm uncomfortable saying that, but, um, without going out to RFP, it really does need to be fair to all concerns. And so I, um, I want to try to see, I believe Mr. Alfalter has the right to try to recoup his costs. I'm not a hundred percent sure, Matt, that you have to be the same owner, um, for the restaurant as you are with the cart, because we say in the lease agreement that the cart, um, that we've already carved out space for that. So I think that might go in your benefit. Um, so I, I don't, I don't see how we can pull the RFP at this point. Um, you know, I, I, we've got to, we've got to do what's right for the bigger picture, but this, um, item that Denise just pulled out for us, number B, for the accommodations for the street cart, I think is a real boon in your direction. And that's all I have.
I, I would just like to say, I agree, and I certainly don't want to be a, um, something that holds up this process. I want the transfer to be quick and easy, not only for me, but also for the community. Um, I would support an RFP completely, as long as I, all, all I'm really trying to do is, is recoup a very minimal amount of my hard costs and my work and the time and the effort that I've put in. And if that is possible, that would be excellent. If it isn't, I will, as always, respect the decision of the council, and try to do what's best for the city.
It is possible that the city is not going to require that the person work with you. I mean, we, we, we really can't, but we, it is possible that, and, you know, perhaps you can find out who has picked up the RFPs from the city and work with them in terms of concluding your materials with their RFP.
Is it possible to ask city staff to provide the person who the RFP is awarded to with Mr. Alfalter's contact information, so that if the process can be made easier by the transfer and/or sale of those licenses, that that be something we offer to that person?
We can provide that information to anyone that's picked up the RFP.
When they turn in the RFP at the deadline, at four P.M., we could give it, those names out at that time, yes, because we opened the RFPs same time.
Okay. And I would ask that we do that at the very least.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. And then do the same consideration when we're looking at the food cart as well, so that they have his contact information, would be able to potentially purchase that vending cart and/or the licenses required with it.
Sure.
At least.
Okay, Matt.
I think that sounds very, I mean, I think that sounds very amenable, and I appreciate the council coming back to discuss this matter again. I really do appreciate the time and energy that's gone into this, and ultimately, I want to see someone come in and really succeed on top of the hard work that everyone, that everybody has put in.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Do we have to make a motion, or just, not really, just keep the RFP going?
Right, there's no, there's, there's nothing, unless you want to change what's already in motion, there's no need to make any motion.
Okay. All righty. Um, I would just like to make a little comment there. Congressman Launfeld, you know, is retiring, and I think we need to do our due diligence, number one, to thank him, if we think about what we can thank him for, and then push forward, because he has until November, and I hope he's not a lame duck, push forward with anything we need and really reach out to him with a heavy thrust. So, that's my comment.
And also with that, make sure that you're registered to vote for the upcoming elections, and look at who is running, uh, in his place to see who you would like to support.
Oh, yeah, uh, Robert Garcia is going to be running for that seat, yes. I don't know who else, but he already put his name in the hat, so. All righty, well, if there's no further action, and Michael, you can turn down that, you can turn off that computer, and Tony, if you're listening, good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.